Joining us for the briefing meeting. Do commissioners have any items they would like to add to the agenda other than those that are on the published agenda? All right, then we're going to follow the agenda as it's published. Do any commissioners have any questions about any items on the agenda for the regular five o'clock meeting? Okay, great. So, first item on our agenda is the election equipment purchase. And Corinne Duncan's here to help us with this. Thanks for being here.
All right. Thank you, commissioners, for giving time on your schedule to brief you on the election system software update. So the short of it is that we have requested the, an upgrade of our high-speed scanner from the 850 to the 950, and that requires a software upgrade. And the State Board of Elections has deemed that a new system, and so that requires commissioner approval. So that's why I'm briefing you today. This is not a major change from what we do now, but again, because the State Board deemed it new rather than just an upgrade, we do need the approval from you. So it's called EVS 6300, and it enables us to use the DS 950, which is the equivalent replacement for the 850s that we currently use. And those are machines that we use in, kind of, in the background. We use them to process absentee by mail votes, and then we also use them for recounts if we need to do that. The biggest change, and it's a very positive change, is a switch from Windows 7 to Windows 10. So that's great. And then there are some more minor positive things. It's more streamlined for our internal reporting. We also have the ability to scan ballots without a manual pre-sort, so we can do that faster. It has some expanded options for the DS 200, which is the tabulator at the precincts, as well as the express vote. And it has bigger font on the results tapes for poll workers, so when poll workers are auditing at the end of the night, it's a little bit easier to read. So for voters, there's not a lot. There are the more options on the express vote screen, which could be faster voting depending on the ballot type, because you could display more than one contest at once, or if the ballot was really small, you could display the whole ballot if we wanted. And then also, the tabulators at the voting locations will be able to print the tapes faster, and that is important because on election night, when people are waiting for results, we're waiting on those precincts to go through their auditing quickly and then bring those results back. So that'll speed things up a little bit, too. So not huge changes out there that voters will impact directly, but they will feel it in other parts of the system. So I do want to go back to why we are requesting the 950, because that's driving the software upgrade. So our current high-speed scanners for the past two years have needed replacement, so they've had multiple times of where they failed during board meetings and that sort of thing. And so the equivalent replacement is the 950. So we put in the budget for, to replace both of our machines, we have two of those, and that budget appropriation did happen, so that's great. We don't, that's taken care of. But we had to wait to purchase these machines for the State Board of Elections to certify them. So that's what we were waiting on for the purchase. That certification happened on July 20th, so that wasn't, that's just a few weeks ago. And that's when we learned that the software upgrade was going to be classified as a new voting system. And so what we have done so far is the Board of Elections in January requested that we request from the commissioners to purchase the two 950s, so you've heard that before. And then in June, when you approved the budget, that was part of that, that budget allocation. And then, of course, the State Board did certify the equipment last month. So next steps are that the Board of Elections has to witness a demonstration of the equipment, so that'll happen on August 14th at our state conference. And then I'm hoping to come back on August 15th to the commissioners' meeting then and ask for formal board action to approve the use of that equipment at that meeting. Are there any questions? Thank you.
All right, next up is economic development policy on wage rates. Tim Love is here to help us with this.
Good afternoon, commissioners. A brief presentation this afternoon to help us navigate. Right. So, as requested by the Board of Commissioners, Buncombe County staff have taken a closer look at our economic development policy. Just want to propose some initial thoughts on those potential changes to you and a potential schedule for doing this over phases, and so we'll go ahead and jump into the content. So our agenda today, quick overview, and then we'll spend some time talking about the economic development policy. Last revised in 2017, we've never really talked about it publicly since, in terms of how it's structured, the goals and things like that, and I think that would be important. Staff prepared a number of options for how the policy could be revised, and so I want to walk through those. That way, commission can have some input, and then we'll talk through next steps. So overview and request. Of course, this is the briefing, so no request of you today, but should we come to a future meeting, we would have a request of commission. So the overview, the economic development investment policy was last updated in 2017. At that time, there were a number of substantive changes made that were improvements. One change that was not made, though, there was no indexing built into the schedule of wages, and so those wages have basically been static since the last time that policy was updated in 2017. Since the change, you know, we've seen some pretty impressive accomplishments, the announcement of six projects, over $750 million in capital investment, over 1,000 jobs announced, and average wages for those jobs of $60,000 and plus. However, goes without saying, in recent years, we've seen a lot of change in the economy, especially locally. And so while we've seen some wages increase, we've also seen inflation creep into those gains and create rising costs of living. So a lot of challenges in our community. So our request for commissioners is to consider the recommended changes we're proposing in this Phase 1 to the economic development policy, but then also direct staff to continue the work in a subsequent phase to get a little bit deeper into the analysis, and we can talk more about that, what that would include. So by way of overview, so our economic development policy as it stands today, the purpose is to broaden and diversify development of new businesses and industries in Buncombe County. This authority is derived from a specific statute, which I list there, which has specific requirements to increase population, taxable property, industry, employment, et cetera. One thing that's really important that I want to talk through just for a moment is, you know, the statute is built on this concept of competition or necessity. And so the idea that but for economic development incentives, economic expansion would not occur. And so that could take the form of a new business that comes to our community, only comes but for the economic development incentives. It could also be an existing local business that expands with our community but for those incentives. And so just wanted to mention that because it's often, folks often ask me, you know, how do economic development incentive decisions get made, and, you know, why can't we just incentivize any business that's been here for 50 years? And it really comes down to that necessity statement and the competitiveness of that, and again, the quote-unquote "but for" clause. Our eligible industries, in general, looking at manufacturing, data processing, distribution, et cetera. More importantly, there's some ineligible industries, and those are listed here as retail, commercial, or residential projects. So, you know, you'll never see, you know, a Walmart project come from us to y'all, just like you wouldn't see, you know, a housing development where we're requesting economic development incentives. The driver of our policy as it relates to the statute and how we sort of stay compliant is primarily around capital investment. And so that's the idea, that there's a construction of a facility, within that facility, there's equipment, all of which is taxable. That taxable equipment and facility thus allows us to incentivize businesses. Additionally, we pay close attention, based on commission's direction, to the jobs that are created. It's not just about the taxable income, the building. It's about those jobs, but most importantly, the quality of those jobs. So what are the wages that are paid? But additionally, and which was indicated in the 2017 policy, a focus on what we call equitable hiring. So that's incentivizing employers to make the right decision and choose hires that participate in programs like our STEP program or Inclusive Hiring Partners. And said another way, you know, these are historically disadvantaged, marginalized populations, and we want to make sure getting the same opportunities at these high-quality jobs that we're bringing to our community. So that's the policy as it stands today. This is an example of the tables that exist in the policy. On the left, you can see capital investment thresholds. The basic idea here is like the smallest project is a $1.5 million project, and then we would allow a certain number of years for that project to grow. Once you get to a $10 million project, you have basically a five-year runway to deliver your project. We're really trying to focus discussion today, though, is on the right. And so that, this schedule that you can see, this isn't our existing policy. And in 2017, these numbers looked great. You know, the bottom rung on this schedule starts at $20.93, and six years ago, that was a really good wage. We know now, as things have advanced, that this wage, while not guaranteed by any means or considered a minimum wage, we see this wage sort of naturally occurring in our community. And so the question the commission posed to us is, do we need to incentivize a wage that's already incurring? And the answer by statute would be no. So this schedule is the schedule that we really want to focus on today. The way this would be applied in an actual economic development incentive deal is for every job that occurs at each of these rungs on this table, the company would be eligible for an additional incentive, which is that far-right column. So three jobs at the first rung would get you $1,500 or $500 per job created. As a friendly reminder, this is our policy, but there's always a contract that is used to govern these economic development incentives, and that's how we hold companies accountable. We also have an approach that's pay-for-performance, so that we're never paying on the front end. That way, we can make sure that, you know, companies are doing what they say they will. So that's the state of play. That's where we're currently at. In this next section, we'll start to talk about potential revision in this initial phase, and so this is where I'll be looking for some feedback from y'all today. So our issue with our wage schedule is that it's not indexed, it hasn't been updated since 2017. Our recommendation is to change that fundamentally. So first off, make sure that we're indexed in the policy so that this updates annually. But while we're taking a look at that, let's consider what's the methodology we feel most appropriate to even define the rungs on that schedule. And so what we've done here is we've given you three examples, and we'd be glad to look at others, but we feel that these are pretty, pretty strong. So the first is an average wage method, and so this is our current method that's applied. And if we revise the figures to be compliant with today's numbers, so 2022, the $20.93 number, that was the bottom rung from 2017, would go to $24.25. And from there, we would just escalate that using a formula to calculate the different rungs on the ladder. Next up, we decided to take a departure from average wages and focus more on something we talk about a lot in other parts of our work here, such as affordable housing, and look at median household income. So this second bullet refers to Buncombe County's median household income. And what we've done here is we're looking at a household and assuming that it only has one income-producing individual in it, rather than a full family or something of that nature. That number for us is $28.60. As we go to look at our third option, we bounced around some other ideas, but we said, you know, based on our strategic plan, our goal in some ways was to catch up or exceed the state, so why not use state median household income as a driver for us here? That number's $29.09. So those are three options. On the next slide, I'm going to show you how those compare, but what I also want to do is I want to take a moment, because there's been some reporting just this week on this topic of median household income, and wanted to just share briefly, if you've read that article, why these numbers may be different. The main reason is the numbers that we're presenting to you today are based on census figures. And the thing about census figures, you know, that's a formal process that occurs, but it also lags. So, you know, it's based on real data, real survey data, but it's always going to be somewhat old, because we only do the census once every 10 years. The American Community Survey occurs a little more frequently, but still, it's lagging data. The data that we saw in the Citizen Times this week, also good data, not saying it's right or wrong, what that is, is more of a projection of where we currently are. So if census data is looking at where we were at time of census, you know, that's looking at HUD's view of where we might be today. I'd add a few more kind of additions to that of why this is different. The data we're presenting to you is based on Buncombe County today. The data you may have seen in the article is based on the MSA, which includes four counties. And so there's a lot of differences, but just wanted to share that as we sort of move forward. So the wage schedules, just to do a quick comparison, you know, your far-left column, that's going to be the per-job incentive that you receive as a company that's able to demonstrate the ability to hire at any of these levels. Your second column, that's our current policy, so the 2017 average wage. You can see our next column is 2022 average wage. And then our final two columns are the AMIs for Buncombe County and North Carolina respectively, where you can see sort of how our wages are updated. The way that we escalate these, there's no science in kind of the range. We did just kind of a 6% spread, just to increase those for each rung. That could easily be changed if commission saw fit. Either way, the point to take away from this is a revision needs to occur. If we go to an average wage, we're going to see a higher bottom rung at $24.25. If we go to AMI, substantially higher in the $28.70 range, and then at the North Carolina AMI range, going up to $29. I'm going to pause, see if there's any input on these options. You don't have to make a decision today, this is briefing, but if you've got input, for instance, if you thought average wages were not the right way to go, and you prefer to see an AMI approach, that would be great feedback to hear.
I have a question.
Please.
So just, just at first glance, my initial reaction would be looking at the, since we're wanting to increase the income, you know, incentivizing the area median income like North Carolina, but I am curious, can you weigh out any of the pros and cons with that, with, you know, kind of with going with one of these over the others?
Sure. I think, I'd be glad to bring, you know, additional pros and cons on this. I think, you know, as an employer, candidly, employers are going to say, that's really high, Tim, you know, like, why? And I think we'll say, well, we need people to be afford, be able to afford to live in this community, that's why. And that our incentives are just that, they're incentives, they're not entitlements. This is, we're incentivizing a certain type of behavior from employers. I think the, the trade-off, where we want to be careful, is we want to make sure that we're not creating incentives that are so high that we can't sort of create other types of benefits. And so on my next slide, we'll get into equitable hiring. Like, I don't want employers to just walk away from the table. I want them to be at the table so we can talk about high wages and also equitable hiring. If my policy is so far out of reach that no one ever feels like they'll be available, that it won't be accessible to them, we won't be able to have those positive discussions. So it's definitely a balance. I think all three of these options are good options, and I think we have a good rationale for each of them, so.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Tim, I've got a question.
Please.
If a company comes in and says, we're going to produce, you know, 100 jobs, and, and here's what they're going to, you know, here's the spectrum of what the wages will be on it, I mean, it seems like, once we pick which of these columns we're going to use, like, it seems pretty easy to calculate what the incentive would be, but if, let's say, like, only half their employees are paid enough to qualify for the incentives, and the other half, you know, don't pay very well. They would still get paid for the good-paying jobs, even though, let's say, half their workforce is not paid very well.
Sure.
Is that correct?
That's definitely how that could work. What I would say is that our partners in this, that, you know, the EDC in particular, we are recruiting a specific type of company when we talk about economic development incentives. There's lots of folks that come asking, many of those do not make it through to y'all. So we would not be looking for an employer that is really kind of, you know, at the lower end of the spectrum. Typically, you know, we're looking, the employers that we're bringing in, you know, they're hiring at that entry-level position, kind of at that bottom rung. That's where we expect to see them.
I mean, that's been my concern, based on the projects that we've seen. I wonder, though, if, and I don't want to make this too complicated, but I wonder if we might want to have something in there that says something about that as a policy, because to me, that, that kind of matters a lot. I mean, if, you know, that, that, that if not 100%, at least a very high percentage of the workforce is being paid here, because, yeah, part of the, we have such a low unemployment rate, unlike, I mean, there's some communities around this state and country that would say, like, hey, we need all the jobs that we can get. But frankly, that is just not the case that we're in, in Buncombe County. We have a shortage of workers, right? There's plenty of jobs out there. What we need are good-paying jobs. So I would not want to be in a position where we are asked, where basically our company could say, look, I'm meeting your policy, I want to be compensated for these, even though a high percentage of their, or substantial portion of their workforce is paid, just jobs that are similar to what's all over the place in our economy.
Absolutely.
Are you thinking of, like, establishing a floor on the living wage, for instance?
Maybe there's some floor, or maybe it's something saying, like, you know, X percentage of the workforce has to be paid in these higher wage categories, and it's some pretty substantial, maybe not 100%, but like, you know, a very, the majority of the jobs are jobs like this, something like that.
I'd be very interested in that, and I think, to me, the pay equity piece is sort of maybe best tackled by having that floor, because you could, for instance, achieve having 75% qualify for these incentives and also have very low-paid workers. So I think if what, I'm particularly interested in sort of scenarios or solutions that help ensure some minimum threshold.
I'd be glad to bring some additional ideas forward. You know, in the policy, there's, one of the last pages, it's like other considerations, for lack of a better term, and there's certain requirements. You know, a company must have a sustainability policy, must provide some type of health insurance, those different types of things. So I could see a world where we could propose something like a living wage floor or something like that, and so be glad to float some ideas like that.
Let's be careful when we talk about equity in jobs here. Now, let's remember, we're in what the highest paid, one of the highest counties in the state to live in, or in the southeast for that matter, and if companies are coming in, paying people, even if they're paying 50% at the top, but then at the bottom, they're barely getting a living wage, we need to think about what that could put the strain on our infrastructure here in the county. Is that really helping us? Do we want to give them incentive? And that's the key to me. When I think of incentive, we've got to be looking at companies that have gone really help the quality of life in Buncombe County. And that's what incentive is for. And I have a problem when we start giving them incentive, but yet, on one end and on the other end, look at what they're paying, because that's not helping us in the long run. I mean, when we look at our five-year strategic plan, we're not getting where we need to be. In some ways, that's working against what we're trying to do. I'd be, you know, I want to look at it, but we need to be careful there, especially when we start talking about equity, because we can shoot ourselves in the foot.
Thank you. Any other thoughts on that wage schedule before we jump to a related but slightly different topic? You can always come back. So, you know, related to wages, you know, closely related, is this concept that we're talking about of equitable hiring. And, you know, some of this exists in the policy, and so what you see is, you basically got a side-by-side. So on the left, we have our current policy. I apologize for just, like, tossing all those words on the page, but that's literally what it says. On the right, we've got some recommended changes, and where we've kind of bolded the key changes. And so just to kind of paraphrase where we're at today, our current policy encourages hiring from certain populations. And so you see those three bullets on the left, those are the populations that are currently encouraged. And for each of those, you know, there's a requirement to being, you know, at living wage or whatever, and a $500 incentive. And so we've been using this to some success, you know, and getting better at figuring out how to make it work. But we've got some thoughts about how to improve it. And we thought with this quick, these quick changes to the schedule, let's go ahead and make some changes to equitable hiring, so that way we can deploy that immediately, given where we are economically in this community. So the recommended changes, you know, at the top, we would require that an employer participating in this program participate in the Inclusive Hiring Partners Program or an equivalent workforce development program. So like, right off the bat, you must participate. Just as a reminder, what is Inclusive Hiring Partners? This is a partnership with the Chamber where we link employers with those that would like to be employed to guarantee interviews for folks that are participating in the program. The Inclusive Hiring Partners Program assists folks that are in housing and other programs to sort of, you know, build their skills, it provides wraparound services. But what we want to make sure is that, you know, folks that participate in that program have an opportunity on the other side. So that guaranteed interview is crucial, and we've had, we've got a number of employers, including Buncombe County, some of our larger employers, that participate in this program. But we want to make it a requirement, not an optional item. Next up, we want to open up those sort of buckets, you know, whereas we have three bullets on the left, you know, we want to continue to work with NC Works, we think that's great. We mentioned our STEP program here, but additionally, we've added sort of our workforce program, which is closely related. We mentioned Inclusive Hiring Partners again. We change our language a little bit to step away from low-level nonviolent offenders to just talking about justice-involved individuals. And then we open the door with this final bucket to talk about employer-specific wraparound programs. And the reason we do that is because, candidly, there's a lot of employers in this community that are figuring out equity at a quicker clip than my policy will ever hold up to. And so we want to make sure that those that are doing good work in this space and providing their own services have an opportunity to qualify as well. The final sort of big change here is we'd like to double that incentive from $500 to $1,000 as a minimum, and then, you know, that would vary, you know, if, depending on the wage rate of the individual hired. So just some quick changes to the policy so we can deploy it pretty quickly. Would welcome any input from y'all on this. It's an area we continue to, to build into economic development agreements that come before you, and where we've gotten a little bit smarter in recent years, so.
I like the changes that you're suggesting there. I think you're, thank you for taking a good look at this and coming forward with some good ideas to move forward with.
That's right. Do folks seem receptive to the justice-involved portion changing?
Absolutely. As you know, there's a ton of folks doing really great work in this space, and so what my job, the EDC job, becomes is, let's make sure we're making those connections. So these existing programs, you know, sometimes they exist outside the traditional economic development sphere, and we want to make sure that they're connected. And I think we- and we want to make sure that they're connected, and I think we've done that in recent years. Still more work to do, to be clear, but.
I think, though, Tim, that's the component I appreciate the most, is how we're partnering and collaborating across the county to ensure that everyone has the opportunity to work at equitable wages. So I'm really supportive of these changes, and appreciate you digging into them, thanks.
Absolutely, and again, more work to be done.
I think the way things are changing, this is good, that we're looking at this, because if I remember in '17, when we made those changes, we hadn't, that was the first time in 10 years. And we can't, the way things are changing now, we can't wait that long. No, we have to stay current, if we're going to be competitive, dealing with projects we're trying to get in Buncombe County.
Appreciated. Can't take too much credit, y'all urged us to look at it, and it's getting close to 10 years, so I can't take too much credit, so. All right, so.
I have a question, Tim.
Please.
So the minimum job incentive value of $1,000 per employee, I just want to understand how that incentive interfaces with the incentives on the previous page? So is it 1,000, then plus whatever you qualify for on the previous page based on salary? So if it was, you know, the $500 level, it'd be like 1,000 plus 500, it'd be at $1,500.
That's where we.
You add them the two together.
That's where we'd like to be, correct.
Do you get the 1,000 for a job where you do the inclusive hiring process, but it's a lower-paying job, so it doesn't qualify for any incentive based on the wage itself? You still get the 1,000, or you don't get anything unless it's getting up into the wages listed on the chart?
Historically, we've, we've hired at that, you know, it has to be above a living wage, whatever that is, but it, we, it has to be above a living wage, that's historically where we left it, so.
Okay, so it could be that you would get the 1,000, even though it's not elevated up to these much better-than-living-wage standards?
Historically, that's how we've done it, in the future, it doesn't have to be the way we do it.
Just, just curious.
So I.
Go ahead.
I've got one slide, and so, one thing I'd like to say, so next steps, you know, we're at the briefing today. We'd like to come back to the regular meeting on the 15th. We'll have kind of a policy document that features these changes. You know, we may have to do an, we'll work through the logistics on that. But you would approve a new policy, ideally on the 15th, at the regular meeting. We'd then like to kick off sort of a Phase Two, where we dig a little bit deeper into some of these issues, and convene some of our, our key stakeholders in the space, to talk about, you know, additional changes that could be made, and sort of refining of the policy. So, again, I've said it multiple times, you know, there's more work to be done, and we envisioned addressing some of that during a Phase Two of this.
All right, any other feedback for staff at this time? I mean, it sounds like part, part of it is like selecting which of these columns to use, right? I don't hear anybody, like, going strongly to the mat on one versus the other, so it sounds like there's people who are thinking about that. So, like, arguments, you've laid out the pros and cons well, like, you know, raise the bar, but then you have fewer projects, and so. So you may not get any more feedback from us today, is that all right? If you can, and you'll bring this back to us, and then we'll make some final decisions on this.
That sounds good.
All right, thanks, Tim.
Thank you.
All right. The last item is social worker recruitment and retention.
Hi, good afternoon. Okay, so I've been here before, but I'm Rebecca Smith, I'm the Director of Social Work, just in case. And I'm here today to talk about some challenges that we're facing with staffing our Child Protective Services Investigations Team. This is really about our workforce, without whom we cannot accomplish our mission of keeping families in Buncombe County safe and well. So it's a really important topic in my mind, and I appreciate your time, and allowing us to come in and speak about what we're facing. We're hoping to have a conversation about turnover, vacancies, and inability to fill the positions that we have available, which is leading to extremely high workloads, and inability to balance workloads, staff being more and more burned out, and leaving our agency, which then exacerbates the problem. Our hope is to make some recommendations that will contribute to an overall package that we've put together to maintain the existing investigators that we have at this time, to help to balance those workloads that I spoke about, to increase the, the, to increase the applicant pool for investigations positions, and to increase our ability to move through the hiring process from interview to actual hire. At this time, what we, or what we've been experiencing for the last six months or so is many of our chosen applicants turning us down for the positions. There have also been times in the last six months where we have had absolutely no applicants for our positions, which is something brand-new that we've never experienced for these positions. We must do more to prevent the trained and experienced staff we still have from leaving Buncombe County, to ensure that going into our next busy season, which is coming up, late August, early September, that we have the team needed to continue to initiate investigations, to ensure that children in our community are safe, to create workloads that are in line with state standards, and to have a robust applicant pool. As I just stated, CPS Investigations experiences low and high-volume times. We rely on those lower-volume times, like June and July, as you can see in this, in this chart, to, for staff to recover and ground themselves, and catch up on documentation, to get prepared for the next busy season, which is right around the corner. When we are understaffed, as we are now, it's difficult in these low-volume times, and then it becomes almost impossible in the high-volume times. As you can also see in this chart, the, the darker line is this fiscal year, or this calendar year, and those dotted lines are, are previous calendar years. And you can see that we've actually maintained a pretty decent volume. The reason for that is we, we know that we are low-staffed, and we are jumping in at every, in every possible way to try to keep those caseloads as low as possible. And an example of that is, right now, in this month, we've received around 250 new reports. And our caseloads are actually under that, they're at about 190. So the fact that we've been able to maintain those despite the workforce shortage is really a testament to everyone working together, our quality assurance staff, our management team, our supervisors, all pulling together to try to keep the investigative team afloat, and prevent them all from walking out the door, to be honest. So here's a few other statistics. So in May, we were in a place where, I'm just going to be honest, our entire team, our staff, they were crying at their desks, and it was really hard to watch. And so we all pulled together, and we came up with a plan, and we all jumped in and started initiating cases, including myself. Our management team, our supervisors, quality assurance, just to try to help support our team. You'll see that 19 total staff were kind of repurposed, and what that means is they were pulled from their normal jobs, which are important jobs, to try to solve this problem. But we can't solve it in that way, we need a sustainable plan. So you can see from this slide, as well, that in May, we had 11 vacant positions, or 11 social workers in, out of 29 positions vacant, and then in July, we had 10 out of 29 positions vacant. So continuing to have that, the, the vacancies there, and, and continuing to struggle with the hiring process. So we have already put a few things in place to try to address this outside of these asks, and so Sharon is going to talk a little bit about what those things are.
Good afternoon. So the first thing I want to do is I want to play you one of the videos that is going on right now.
In investigations, I never know what I'm going to get, and I like that. Other jobs have been a little bit more mundane and kind of predictable, but here, every day is an adventure. I feel very supported at Buncombe County, I think there is a, a ton of support with management. If you are feeling a calling, listen to it, because it is a calling. This job is not a choice, it chooses you.
Listen to the call, join our team and make a difference. Buncombe County offers a very rich benefits package, including a 401K with an 8% contribution from the county, a state pension, first-in-class health insurance, 13 paid holidays, 12 days of sick leave that roll over each year, vacation time starting at 10 days per year, which increases with service, and much more. Apply now, go to buncom county.org/jobs to learn more.
So this is just one of the initiatives that we have taken over the last few months to try and address this issue. One of the first areas that we looked at was, what are the barriers? And some of the barriers that we found was the, the degree requirement, and you had to have a social work degree. But what about some of the other degrees, are they applicable? Is there any way that we could bring the, you know, the candidates in that didn't have a social work degree, such as, like, criminal justice? And so we did change the job description, and that has actually shown a little bit of movement in hiring folks. We also executed a contract with Sparks, and Sparks is a temporary agency. And it's really looking at folks that, they have to be within North Carolina for some state regulations, but we can bring them on to assist and, and provide some caseload assistance on that. And we've also, as you saw, increased our social media response and ads, and we've done everything we can. We've increased our presence in colleges and, and the local tax, just to see if there's anybody that's, you know, graduating, or is looking at changing their careers. So I think the next slide is, is showing what the competitiveness is in the market. And so if you recall, during our comp study, we talked about the regional price parity, and that's really where we looked at, you know, wages, and we brought them up to what the cost of living is in, in that metropolitan market. And so right now, our midpoint is at 66, and the average of the 18 folks that we looked at, their midpoint through regional price parity is at 68, and what that does is, out of 18, we're 11th. So some of our recommended changes. The first thing we want to do is start with an allowance. And what that allowance will do would be, for anybody in the ITSW or investigative social work area, it would be a $200 per week stipend that would be added, and that would be included, the investigators and the supervisors. The total, if you looked at that annually, would be about 5200, 5250 per employee. We're also looking at, HR will be reviewing the investigative classification to see what is the difference between those that are investigators and the, and the typical social workers, because what we're finding is, you know, some of our social workers are leaving Buncombe County altogether, but many of them are actually jumping into regular social work positions within the county. And so other departments are actually seeing some movement there. And the last recommendation that we're looking at is putting together a recruitment incentive for our current employees. And this would be eligible for the majority of Buncombe County employees. If they know someone and they refer that person to become a social worker, there are some procedures out there. But if, if that person is hired, the employee, once that person starts on day one, the next available paycheck, they would receive a $250 bonus. After that person successfully completes six months, they get another $250, and then once they met a full year, that employee would receive another $250, which would be a total of $750. And it's important to note that, that there would be no additional county funds being requested that would come out of lap salary from the vacant positions. Now, we're looking at these incentives to run through, at the very latest, would be June 30th of 2024, or until we actually met some metrics, would really be 22 of the 29 positions being filled. So today, oops, one more slide here. So just for some transparency here, the, the counties and out-of-state metros that we actually looked at. And so today's ask is, is really looking at, you know, bringing this challenge to you, looking for some support, and then we will come back on the 15th and request you review this for a vote, to either accept it or deny it. Any questions, either Rebecca or I can answer.
Don't think so.
I'll, I'll just say quickly, I had a chance to do a write-along with a social worker this spring, and just, it was a certainly very inspiring experience to see that kind of frontline work, and the commitment of folks working under this level of pressure and duress. So, you know, nothing quite brings something home like seeing it firsthand. So appreciate that, that y'all made that opportunity available for me as part of HHS Committee. And also, many of these issues kind of came up in the course of just driving around for a few hours in the afternoon. So glad that we have an opportunity at a more structural level to, to try to invest in, in shifting some of this.
Great, thanks, Jasmine. All right, thank you, appreciate it. All right, Commissioner sets everything else on the agenda. We do have a closed session prior to our regular meeting, beginning at 5:00. Mr. Free, would you explain the purpose?
Yes, sir, this will be a closed session pursuant to General Statute 143, 318, 11A6, to discuss personnel matters with the board, and no action is expected back in open session.
All right, is there a motion to go into closed session?
I moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're in closed session, and we will come back out and return into open session prior to the beginning of our regular meeting, 5:00.